What time is it?
I gotta hear it within about ninety minutes.
Is that, was that, okay, good.
And I have to leave at thirty.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Sherman Gurey.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Kuzinski.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsh.
Here.
Alternate member Lemmings.
Here.
Let the record show, Member Carey and alternate member Henigan's were absent with notice.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any commissioner comments regarding items that are not on today's agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Ladies first.
Ladies first.
I just wanted to commend the chief and the staff for the communication and the efforts in getting ready for Dorian. It was, it was nice to be notified all along the way, even nicer that we weren't hit full on. So, thank you all very much. And I have one more thing that I would like to get on the record, and that is, I, I noticed in the Coastal Star that there was a home in Gulfstream that was foreclosed on because of fines levied in their place over off a federal highway. What is happening with six thousand nine, North Ocean Boulevard, that is a blight on our community for years now. Have we levied fines? Where are we? And what is our next step? Something has to happen. It's a danger for kids, for dogs, for anything. It's, and it's, it's an absolute, it's had a blue tarp and it's, it's a, it's a danger for years.
Yes, that case went to the magistrate, I think it wasn't in September, it was last month, for a violation hearing, and it's going for a fine assessment hearing in October. So, it would be the first Tuesday in October is the fine assessment hearing.
And that would be the first time fines would be levied? I'm, I'm sure, I don't understand what a fine assessment hearing is.
So, they found the property in violation.
Okay.
They gave him thirty days to get a demolition permit and then ninety days total to, to have the property demolished. So, if that does not happen, then fines are going to be assessed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I second Penny's comments, the chief and the staff. They did a great job. I just wanted, the last meeting I made a incorrect motion to create a moratorium for the AstroTurf. It's now been corrected. I just wanna clear the thing that I was looking for any way to stop. Temporarily.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments, questions? I now open the meeting to the quasi judicial and turn it over to the attorney to ask, ask for the ex parte.
Let me see, did we approve the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, yeah.
I missed that. Okay, yes. Thank you. Any comments regarding the minutes from our August twelfth meeting?
I had a couple. There was an item on page two, and it said, Member Carey, it's up at the top. Member Carey asked for a follow-up on the platted twenty-foot setback on the rear of the property, and it didn't indicate which property it was. I think it was the former Lynn Allison property. Is that what we were talking about? So, maybe that should be in there. And then, under the AstroTurf debate, I certainly didn't have a stand at the, at the time, but when we were talking about the pros and cons of real grass and AstroTurf, and this was something one of the members in the audience also brought up. We talked about the high need for fertilizing real grass, the need to put on pesticides on real grass, and I didn't see that in here. So, it was, I think, germane to our discussion last meeting, and it'll, going forward, it probably means nothing. But those were just two items that I didn't see in here.
Do you want me to specify, 'cause I know I talked about the maintenance, so you want me to specify that the maintenance is referring to fertilization and...
Yes.
Okay, so I'll...
If you don't mind.
I'll, I'll make sure to put those.
Okay.
Make sure.
That's it.
But Dave, she does have to go back and review the audio to see what exactly was said, because she can't just put something in that wasn't said in the meeting. So, she'll go back and review the audio.
And does that mean that we, we can't or should not approve the minutes at this meeting? Or can we approve them subject to?
Subject to.
I'd be fine with that.
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, so we just move that forward.
Subject to amendment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Any other comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove, subject to amendment.
I move.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. And that's subject to amendment. Now, moving forward to the quasi judicial portion. Ex parte communications?
Yes, does any member have any ex parte communication on this application?
No. No.
Okay. And now, I think the, the town clerk will swear in anyone who's going to speak on this item. Do you can stand and be sworn? Anybody who's gonna talk on this particular item?
Please stand. If you're gonna talk on this item, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're providing to the commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, may I have a seat?
Okay. Staff report.
What we have in front of us, my application was made. Property address at seven Harbor Drive South. It is for the construction of a new single-family with four bedrooms, two-and-a-half-car garage, three-and-a-half bathrooms. Couple of changes were made, and Terry, in the comments from the last meeting, had mentioned to us regarding the twelve-foot utility easement as part of the resolution. That is to be incorporated into the project once the, it reaches to the building permit stage. So, it's not reflective on the survey currently, but it will be as consistent with the resolution, with the Porter Street abandonment. The project is set at a finished floor elevation of fifteen NAVD. The original plans were at seventeen, so it has come down significantly during the, this point in time. Barring that, we have no objection to this project. The applicant is here to make a presentation. Corey is here on behalf of staff and planning, if there's any questions as well. With that, I will turn it over to Steve, who will go through a PowerPoint presentation with you.
Good morning. Steve Pargus, Bargo Homes, for the thirty-one Spanish River Drive, and that's it, too. Again, hate talking to... Get all nervous every time.
We're easy.
Tell me to stand here.
Oh, Steve, no.
All right, so, Mrs. Chilton's here, too. You know, it's a home for them. It's their personal home. They'll be living here. They wanna be part of Ocean Ridge. We all know it's a great town here. So, I'm gonna make sure I got everything right. It's a coastal West Indies style home. I think it fits in great with the town here. You know, it's nothing, nothing that's gonna stand out. It really goes in with everything we have over here. We go to the... There's our... Did you look, you look at the house there? Has, you know, a little bit of siding. I think it, it really fits in nice. I mean, you know, I can't say anything about it. Do you guys have any comments or questions from so far? I'm gonna start flipping pictures for you. I'm not sure what...
Well, that one's fine right there.
All right.
Just a few comments. You can see it there. The fir-, on the ground floor, you have that balcony railing, which makes no real sense, you know, on the entry. I don't think that's really necessary. I mean, it seems redundant to have a railing.
I mean, I think it follows in with the house's style. Anything you guys really wanna remove, or is...
Yeah, I think I, I would, I would...
Some chairs back there.
I would like to suggest that you, you know, you continue that Chippendale style on the rear, so it's consistent, if you wanna keep that.
You didn't talk about the siding?
No, the, the handrail, the railing detail.
What do you mean on the rear?
If you look at your rear elevation.
Oh, we don't have the same rail on to there.
And I think it would be, it would enhance the...
So, you're saying you don't like the rail right there on the side?
I, I, it's a personal thing, I guess. It just makes no sense. You're not protecting anything from falling off.
I always think maybe they have some chairs or something like that, gives them a little bit of privacy if they're sitting there on the front porch there.
You know, you have...
Do you have any comment?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
That is raised by six inches.
If, I'm sorry, excuse me, she'll need to come up, and also, if she wasn't sworn in, she'll need to be sworn in.
Let me answer the question.
She can certainly, you know.
Yeah, you don't need a rail by law unless you're over thirty inches. I think the detail shows up on the upper, above the front door there.
That sure does there.
But you're landscaping, I, I, I'm just trying to save you money, really. But I'd like to suggest that you carry that pattern through the back. You have a problem?
Yeah, we don't want railing in back.
Mrs. Chilton, you can come up to the podium.
Yeah, please.
Carla, you need to swear.
We'll swear anyway.
Yeah, she'll swear.
Do we need to swear anyway?
You ready? Do you affirm, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're providing to the commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And your name, your, your name and address, please.
Yes, Cindy Chilton, and six-six-nine-three Northwest Sixty Second Terrace in Parkland currently.
Welcome, welcome to the town.
Yes, welcome.
I, I'm just saying, you see that image on, on the screen there?
Yes.
The back railing, if you'd like to see, let's go back to the front one.
Yes.
Cindy, you see how we have the X kind of going through the railing?
Yes.
So, he's saying, if, if we're gonna do that, he'd like to see that same railing.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Same stuff.
On the upper floor, you weren't saying to put it on the, on the...
No, I'm trying.
I, I gotcha, okay.
I'm just trying to be consistent here.
I, I understand what you're saying now. So, whatever railing we choose, even if it's not the railing in the front, to make it consistent all the way around the house.
Yeah, Steve has mentioned, it's coastal, what, West Indies. So, that Chippendale style is, is very common. And I think it would help the house.
I see what you're saying. I misunderstood.
Yeah, I think that could be nicer.
He'll make it cheaper for you.
Yeah, that's the house.
The only other comment I have, it's, and this may be getting, the roof pitch is very low, four and twelve, which again is more Mediterranean than Caribbean, or I don't know if there's any, what impact it would have, but...
I think the house would really look nice though.
Yeah, and it's fine. I just, I was just curious why that was chosen as a thing. Anyway, and I commend you for lowering it, 'cause that was a major concern.
Yeah, so, we did a lot of work, between Wayne and Lisa, Tom, myself, Joe Pike, all of us, we did a lot of studying and...
Yeah, you got your money's worth out of it.
Just get them built here, their home and property, or why?
No, it's, it's a nice addition, so I, I, those are just minor comments, and there are more suggestions.
Is it anything that holds up for moving forward if everybody else is...
No.
I need to...
Any other commissioner? Commissioner comments?
I just had a, a quick question. First of all, I think it fits the neighborhood beautifully and welcome. Thank you very much. And your pervis, pervious area calculations are great. We like seeing more, not less. One of the things that we've talked at different times, and honestly, I don't even know if it's a requirement, but a shade tree. There's a lot of palms on the property. Can we get any native shade trees or anything like that added?
Yeah, is it okay for...
Please.
I mean, we live out in Parkland, so we love, you know, landscaping. If you saw our house now. The reason why we didn't really put anything on the landscape plans is because we're doing quite a bit to begin with, with shrubbery and whatnot. And we'd like to get in, see where we want them, and then put them in at a later date, according to where we may want shade, where we may want blockage, that kind of thing. So, to us, it's, it's kind of hard to make that decision until we're, we're in and, and know where, where we want.
But you're okay committing to doing some shade trees on the front, so that we have those street tree kind of concept?
Yes, but nothing, we don't want anything to be, that grows too tall, that, you know, would create issues. We did have a storm, so we wanna keep that in mind, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Anybody else?
And was, was stuff, drainage, all of that stuff is fine?
It's been looked at. All this, this side data calculations were looked at, and we have no objection on anything at this, at the present time.
Okay, great.
It's a very complete submission, too.
Yeah, I think you did a great job. Steve, you shouldn't be so nervous. Most of us really like you.
I'm the same one.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're a great, you're a great resident, great neighbor, and you, I think you build some pretty neat homes.
Yeah, we're dealt a lot around here.
Yeah.
I missed my last, when I was finishing school, when I was a kid. Kept missing school all the time, for one class, and the teacher finally found me in Parkland. Why, why aren't you here? I have to give oral presentation. I don't wanna... Instead of five or ten other people in an office, put me in front of this thing, I'm like... Anyway, apologize for that, but anyway.
You're just fine, Steve.
I think this is gonna look neat.
It's a nice addition.
I, are, are we gonna, I, I just had some questions about all the drains and stuff, not as a criticism, 'cause honestly, I, even though I read about it, I don't quite understand it, but, you know, all the drains that you put in look pretty, pretty interesting to me, and so that will carry the water successfully off the property and not into neighbors' yards and...
But all that does is it all, you create swales, and the swales run everywhere.
Right.
Run everything or into each of those drains, and, you know, Lisa from the town, over a large number of homes here, she always says that, I always pass her some, you know, we really checked it out, and it gets it underground and into those drains, and then it's the exfiltration under there, you know, basically gravel and rock that catches and holds all the water. People put a lot of money into all that underground drainage there. It's not...
All right, appears that there's a lot of this going on.
There.
Yeah.
But it catches it all and keeps everything in.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, wait a minute, is there public comment?
Oh, sorry. I think we, we didn't mute him.
Comments, if any, that Willie said, Dave's comments about flooding, if it reaches the capacity of the drain system, it's gotta go somewhere. And it's bounded by walls all around, three sides, right? You, you, you're primitive, you, but you have walls all the way around the property, or does it go all the way back to the next property, waterway condo? Goes back to there, the other wall there. Yeah. So, if it reaches capacity over an inch, is that what it's gonna be holding? I'm not the, I'm not a drainage engineer, so I don't really comment, maybe... Well, the only, the only point I wanna make out, it's gotta go somewhere, and it's gonna go out onto the streets.
Terry, if I could answer some of that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Joe Pike in Environment Design
Yeah.
has a very elaborate plan here, which I think...
No, he's a good guy. He's done a lot of...
Yeah, and he's got a...
He's a good one to bring that up.
No, I think your, your concerns, I think, are addressed here, so...
The other thing is a minor problem at this point, but we're gonna have two other houses immediately across the street. They're gonna be torn down and rebuilt. So, I hope that they read the little book about where they're gonna park. And if they're supposed to park on the property, as I understand it, it runs where? All the construction vehicles? And, and Mr. Pargus has built one in that neighborhood on the corner, so he knows. The neighborhood will... But it's been a problem lately, 'cause we've had three downed streets with vehicles everywhere on both sides of the street. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Unless there are other comments of the audience or discussion points by members of the commission, I now close the quasi judicial portion of the hearing and ask for a motion for approval or disapproval.
I make a motion for approval with the suggestions that were made in the discussion.
Okay, and that is to have the railing that is set forth on the front of the, or on the front porch to match the railing. That it be, I guess, are you saying that you want it to be the exact same railing, or just the railing to match it? The same pattern, whatever that pattern is. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the other comment was on the shade trees. Now, is the commission okay with giving them some time to do it? Because normally, once we, you know, once, once the CO is granted, we kind of lose the ability to say, now you need to do this or that. So, it's gonna be kind of hard on something, if you all don't, you know, request it right now, to say, no, you need to put in one or two shade trees before a CO is granted, so...
I think we're, we're still discussing that item, aren't we? So, I think we're, we'll grant them this, and as the applicant mentioned, she would, you know, enhance what's there, so...
Okay, so...
I think that they've met the current criteria.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay. Good. Motion?
I move to accept.
I made the motion.
Yeah, he, he made, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Now, this is our first consideration in vote regarding approval or disapproval under the new ordinance, right? Okay, so this means they go forward, period, subject to the, to the one condition.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, well, moving right along.
So, we don't have to come back or anything else? We just, we know it's gotta be on the plan, we're good, because I know we had to do this.
Yeah, Steve, you're gonna move to the building permit process now with Wayne and Lisa. Yeah. No problem.
Okay, good, thank you. Your presentation. Moving right along, next item on the agenda is consideration of the, this item number three, the synthetic turf ordinance, the draft ordinance. Staff have any preliminary comments?
We just wanna point out that, and I, I think Mr. Marsh brought it up, the, the last time I, I know, and, you know, kind of the direction that we were given, it's, it's kind of hard to do a moratorium when we don't, you know, we need the regulations first before we can do the moratorium. So, what we did in discussions, staff, you know, looked at this and said, okay, here's a couple of things that we can bring forward. There's two different versions. I know that, that the last meeting, there was some discussion on whether or not you're there... Let me back up. There didn't seem to be an issue in allowing synthetic turf to grow, to go in the backyard, but there was an issue on the side yards and the front yard. And so, the ordinances that you have in front of you, one allows them to go, I think it's, well, one of them allows only to go in the backyard, and then the other one allows in the side and front yards in an amount not to exceed thirty-five percent. Now, you ask, where did the, maybe, where did the thirty-five percent come up with? You know, what, that was just, I think, in discussions with, with Wayne and, and Lisa and some other people, and just trying to figure out, okay, what seems to be normal. Now, a lot of the criteria that we have in here for the artificial turf, synthetic grass, that came up. If you remember, at the prior meeting, I think Tracy had submitted some ordinances to you regarding this. This one is primarily based on what Lantana does, which also seems to be based on some towns further south of here, as far as some of their criteria regarding synthetic turf. So, that's kind of the backdrop of this. So, that's, that's what's in front of you, and just procedure-wise, if you all are okay with either one of these, then you can make a recommendation, and it's already on the commission agenda. But if you aren't okay with any of this stuff, we can certainly, you know, and we've already mentioned to the commissioners, we can certainly pull it from the agenda tonight. So, there's no rush, there's no, from a staff perspective, there's nothing that you have to do now, but it's, it's really, it's up to you on, on whatever you wanna do.
And the way it's positioned on the commission's agenda for tonight, can the commission vote on either, either one?
Well, I, yes, they can. However, I think they would be waiting to hear what your recommendation is. So, that's the thing. So, if you have a recommendation on one or the other one, and you wanna make some modifications to one of them, we could probably do that between now and the agenda meeting tonight. I guess, depending on what those modifications are, but...
Okay. Any other staff comments? Okay, commission? Commission comments?
So, Brian, if I understand, you're looking for the commission to maybe suggest one of the two?
If you feel comfortable with that, yes. If you think that, no, you wanna give staff further direction to do something else, we can certainly do that. So, the only reason that we're kind of brought this forward to you the way it is now, it seemed to be at the last meeting, you all were in, you know, kind of a rush to say, let's, let's bring something forward. And so, that's what we've attempted to do.
No, I think the, the verbiage is very good. I, just clarify if you could. The first one, I think the second one, the first one is not appropriate, but that's my feeling.
Are, are you talking about the first one, just the no, no turf in front or side yards?
Well, I, let's talk about that thirty-five percent.
Okay.
Does that mean that under the first one, a person could do up to thirty-five percent only in the rear yard?
No, no, the thirty-five percent does not pertain to the rear yard at all. Thirty-five percent only comes into play on the front and side yards. So, the, the, the rear yard area does not play into the thirty-five percent.
No, I stand corrected. I don't like this one. I think, you know, just, and I'll keep quiet shortly, but, you know, we, we were leaning to allowing the rear yard primarily at artificial turf. I had suggested at one time, twenty-five percent. I personally don't have a problem having it in the rear yard and the side yard, as long as it's not visible from the public right of way. So, I don't know how that fits it.
Can you run that by again, 'cause that, that almost sounds like the second.
It does, but I, I, I just wanna be sure that we limit it to those two areas, and it's not visible from the public right of way.
Backyard, thirty-five percent on the sides, not visible?
I think we have to come up with a maximum coverage on the property, because then you start to impact impervious landscaping areas. I think we have to have a maximum per property on the lot coverage.
I agree with that, but by the same token, when you talk about the front yard and anything being visible, you know, my questions were, was that thirty-five percent number the real number? But, for instance, if you have a driveway that you have pavers and you have it sectioned off...
That is, I mean, you are allowed to do that.
But that's not clear in either of these ordinances, because if you go with the one that allows none, it allows none. If you go with the one that says, and if you go with the one that says thirty-five percent, it also says it cannot abut a driveway or a sidewalk. Well, if it's within the driveway, it's abutting the driveway.
Yeah, I think the clarification, you're correct. I think we all discussed that, you know, it should be or could be allowed within a paving system of a driveway or walkway.
Right, which is what we wanna account for.
Right, so that needs to be clarified. That's a good point. But I think we, we need to be conscious of the coverage, overall percentage.
Overall, okay.
Allowed to be artificial turf on the property.
Well, that goes back to whether we say artificial turf is pervious or impervious, and we're basically saying it's impervious?
Again, there's so many products on the market. That's the thing where we have to be careful.
Wasn't there some description in here that it was pervious?
I believe the details were.
There is, yeah, and the technical aspect of the ordinance, there is reference to both.
And my, I also have a question or a thought. Just because we approve one or the other, doesn't mean everybody in the town is immediately gonna tear out their grass and put in AstroTurf. I, I suspect the nature of the town being what it is, most people will only use it if it's absolutely a necessity.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I mean, one person's necessity might not be another's.
I think it's been presented both from staff and publicly, that, you know, it's here to stay. We're just trying to...
Make it look as good as...
Yeah, not impose that on the public or the citizens, I mean, you know.
I mean, just, just a clarification point, I guess, and this is to Wayne. I mean, there is no regulation on not allowing this now, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's allowed now, just so you all know.
Sure.
There's no permit required, nothing, it's allowed.
But I'm not comfortable with either one, that either of them accommodate what we've asked, you know, what, what my preference is, I shouldn't speak for the panel.
Yeah, let's try to come up with two or three or four points that we can direct Brian's staff to make the necessary amendments. So far, it looks like, let me say it this way, we're on agreement that it is allowed, it'd be allowed in the front yard and the side yards, but the side yard, so long as it's not visible from the street.
The backyard and the side yard.
You said the front yard.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant allowing the backyard and the side yard, but only in the side yard, to the extent it's not visible from the street.
But then I like Mark's comment, that it overall not exceed a certain percentage of the full lot coverage.
Yeah, I, again, using some outside references in other communities, I think twenty-five percent should be the cap for total coverage, that's my personal feel, and they have the choice of putting it in the backyard or the side yard, that's, that gives them more flexibility. I think it's a good starting point, if we find down the road that there's, you know, a fair reason to modify that percentage, but I, I just, I'd rather start a little more conservative than.
Could it be possible to create a, a building lot showing what they would get with twenty-five and what they get with thirty-five, and backyards, most, a lot of town are filled with pools and decks, so there's not going to be much in the backyards.
But we still require pervious factor, and I, I think it's fair, it's worked in other communities.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not that opposed to it.
I think it's a good starting point, I mean, like any ordinance, it's subject to amendment.
Yeah, good thoughts.
Now, with respect to the visibility issue in the side yards, does that mean that if there are shrubs screening the side yard, that does the job in it, anything in the side yards behind the shrubs would create the invisibility factor?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and then, we all agree that we can use it between pavers?
Yes.
Right, just the way it's articulated now in the ordinance.
And I guess, just a clarification, so the, if you're using it in between the pavers, are the pavers only for a driveway or for the patio area, or does it matter as long as it's just, you can use it in between pavers, are we okay with that?
For driveway and walkway.
For driveway and walkway, okay, and that that part will not, will that, do you want that to count or not count in that twenty-five percent cap?
I think, I will have no problem not counting it.
Okay, and is there, and I guess the.
Wayne hasn't taken that class yet.
Right, and then, I guess there's, and I think I just threw in like three or four inches as far as the width in between the pavers, do you want to allow a greater paver width, because I don't know if, I don't want to call out Lisa Truppi, but she did send me an email.
We have a visual.
Oh, okay, there you go, so do you want to allow it up to a certain amount, a certain width amount, which it seems like maybe seven or eight inches might be closer to possibly what's out there, I don't know.
I think a lot of them are four inches.
Okay, I don't really know.
Four inches.
Okay, so do you want to say not to exceed four inches then, in, in width?
Again, just a starting point.
Okay.
If it's a unique pattern that requires more than.
Okay.
Lisa, was that from a current property in Ocean Ridge?
Did you address that somewhere?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, so then, just try to summarize it one more time, so we're all clear, it's good in the front yard, side yard?
Backyard.
I'm sorry, I did it again, anyway, backyard, side yard, with regard to side yard, so long as it's not visible from the street, there's a twenty-five percent limit, and the, the paver, paver strips cannot exceed four inches, but we won't worry about including them with twenty-five percent.
Now, there was something in here on the second page that specifies how the artificial turf will be separated from real grass, and it indicates that there's going to be like some type of barrier, I believe, if I read that right, I just was looking at it, now I lost it, but, it's under B, installation, maintenance, and repair.
There's an edging, that's, that's fine, that's, that's part of the install.
Okay.
Good, so before we vote, let me turn it over to the audience's comments.
That's California. That twenty-five percent, keep in mind, we have a lot coverage, maximum of forty-five percent, so the twenty-five percent is actually a huge area, and most of the, most of the coverage that you have is in the front yard, and for most houses, my house is dramatically in the front yard, that's a thirty percent of my comparable area in the front yard. So, that, the twenty-five percent, I think, if you're going into that direction, twenty-five percent, that's a very high number, you should probably consider going low on that number, if you want to achieve that minimizing the AstroTurf. Second, some of the side, some of the back yards in our town are actually visible from the street, so when we're doing these side yards, not visible from the street, maybe in the ordinance, we should consider, none of it should be visible from the street, so that when you drive by a house that sits in a corner, and you look into the, into that backyard, that backyard is also obscured from the AstroTurf, if that is what we want to look at.
That's good.
Good point.
Thank you, yes. Okay, any other audience comments? Okay, so, so then, back to our deliberation, we want to add the point about, nothing can be visible from the street, none of the artificial, okay.
And, and, but you want to allow, if someone comes forward and says, well, I'll put up a fence, I'll put up hedge material or something like that, then that would be, they would be allowed to, to install that in order to shield this from the public right-of-way, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I think.
Okay, and then a maximum of.
Does that work from your analysis?
And then a maximum of twenty-five percent in the rear and the side yards, will allow as far as the synthetic turf to be in paver, in walkway or driveway paving systems, not to exceed four inches gap width, and it looks like those were the major points.
If someone is, can demonstrate that they cannot successfully grow grass such, and I'm, I don't know whether it's, you know, the place on A1A, will they be able to use a, what will they be able to do, would they have, would people have to tear out things that are already up, or?
Well, no, if there's, if there's something, and that's, we kind of wrote in here too, for the existing artificial, the areas where there's artificial turf, if it's repaired or replaced in an amount exceeding fifty percent, then they would have to come into compliance, which means they may not be able to do it, so I imagine what most people would do in non-conforming situations, they replace it slowly, they never get to that point, so it always exists. I mean, that's, I mean, that's just kind of the way it works.
And my personal, just, again, it's a personal opinion, there's a ground cover that will work on that slope out there?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, you're not mandated to put sod, as long as you have ground cover or landscape.
Well, I mean, well, I guess this was a question I asked to, to the building official, it's, I'm not so sure that, I mean, as long as it's not weeds, okay?
We don't have a requirement.
Well, no, that's, that's why, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, I mean, you know, yeah, you can have pebbles, or you could have, you know, something like that, so just, just so you all understand.
Just as an aside, on, on the seven application, we had aerial views looking down, and you could see how bad the natural grass lawns looked in a number of places in the vicinity, and it's real grass though, or real weeds.
Right, so, let's see, there's your armetids.
And so, if I understand the direction from the board, then you would like for us to come back with an ordinance to address these issues, and then you'll take a look at that proposed ordinance, so right now, we don't plan on taking anything to the, to the commission meeting tonight, we will come back here at your next meeting, make these changes, hopefully have an ordinance in place for you to vote on then, and then we'll place it on the commission agenda, if that's, that's, I'm saying, that's kind of the process that will be following, okay.
Do we want a response to the comment about twenty-five percent being a fair, I mean, a large amount of?
I think that's good.
I can't.
No, I mean, and the way I'm looking at the twenty-five percent is that, you know, somebody has their house, and then they have, okay, here's the yard, and the yard may have tons of other things in it that are not, you know, where there's, you know, different structures or things like that, I mean, I think, Wayne, the way I'm looking at this is, you look at the entirety of the area for the twenty-five percent, so, you know, there may only be like twenty-five percent open space there to, to put something in to begin with, so, and it could be all turf then, I, I don't know, but that's, I'm just saying, I believe those are the conversations I've had with Wayne, and I think that's the way that he's looking at it as well, just so you know, it's not twenty-five percent of the area that is, that could possibly be used for green space, it is, we, we look at the entirety of the area.
Right, and, and that.
The lot size.
That's right, yes.
And the, the twenty-five percent factor is probably a decent number, given the fact that it's going to vary by lot size, the impact of that will vary by lot size, and relative to the house size.
But if, if you use twenty-five percent of the allowed pervy, of, of the pervious area, that's going to limit it much more than twenty-five percent of the lot size. Twenty-five percent of the lot size could be a big number, is what you're saying, right, that it could be the full amount of any landscaping, of, of any pervious area required on the property?
Well, I mean, it could, it would include the, I guess it would include, what, pool areas, all the, that stuff in the back, you would count that as far as twenty-five percent of the rear yard or side yard.
Yeah, but still.
I'm, I'm thinking that's the way, yes.
That's a lot.
Yes.
Well, Mark, but you're in the trenches on this.
Yeah, what works.
Does that, is your opinion?
That's the only percentage I know of that's enforced now, in certain municipalities.
And does it seem to work?
Yeah, I mean, Corey can, Corey can help us, hopefully.
Oh, yeah, good.
Do you gentlemen have a recommendation of what you think, knowing the intent of the board, is twenty-five percent a reasonable number to start with, or should we start lower, and then modify if we find that that's not working? Fifteen percent of the full lot coverage?
What I just asked forty seconds ago, was is there any jurisdiction accusing any less than twenty-five percent, and he says that to his knowledge, so I would probably stick with the twenty-five percent going forward, as a starting point.
Okay.
Okay, good, so, do we need a vote, or we just put it off on staff to redo the ordinance?
If you want to, I mean, if you all want to vote to continue this item until the, or just to continue this item, then we will bring it back at your next meeting, and continue the item with the direction given at this meeting.
Good, perfect, so.
So, if you all want to make a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, and Brian, I think you have some comments regarding the next two items on the agenda?
Yes, the draft ordinance regarding maximum, maximum finished floor elevations, I want to go ahead and pull that, because I know that I've had some further discussions with the town engineer, and we want to make sure that we get the language exactly right before we bring it forward to you, so I would like to pull that item from the agenda at this point, so we can discuss, and hopefully that'll be back in front of you next month. Now, the draft ordinance regarding the sheds, we can talk about it some if you want to now, however, I did not, I just found out late Friday afternoon, where, and I haven't even talked to Wayne or anybody else about this, the question was brought up, well, how does this impact areas where you aren't allowed to have like a six-foot-high fence, such as setbacks going into, closer to waterways and places like that, and, to be quite honest with you, I hadn't thought of that, so, we need to talk about, you know, we'll, staff will, will need to kind of look at that and address that, but I don't know, based on what's in front of you now, I don't know if the board has any direction, we aren't, I'm not looking for a motion to, to send this forward anywhere at this point in time, it's just, if you have any discussions or direction right now that may be helpful to staff when we bring this back to you next month, we can certainly, you know, certainly like to hear it, but, just so you know, that that's the one issue that's kind of sticking out, that we kind of need to address the fact that, you know, certain fences aren't allowed, you know, within, I guess, within certain distances where there might be greater setbacks in rear yards or for structures, so, I just kind of wanted to mention that to you.
So, will we, we'll just defer?
It's what, it's whatever you all want to do, if somebody has any comments right now on this, you know, one way or the other, you can certainly let us know, or you can take, you know, do whatever you want.
How does this deal with back-to-back water lots, you know, waterfront lots, like a canal, you know, if somebody puts a shed in the back and screens it from the road, but it's exposed to the neighbor to the opposite side?
You know what, we are not, I, I think what we're saying is, if you're having a shed that is going to encroach into the setback, it's either got to be screened by the six-foot-high opaque fence, or it's got to be screened, or, if, that's if you're trying to set it on the property line, or, it's got to be screened by landscaping if you want to encroach into the three-foot or the five-foot, you know, kind of setback, which, your setbacks here are greater than that, but if you just want to put it in the middle of your lot, that's, doesn't encroach into any setback, this doesn't apply, so that's the only way, if someone is going to install a shed that meets, that's no bigger than the dimensions listed here, then they would have to, they would have, and it's based on property line, not on, I guess, not on, even if there's a canal, it's not really addressed, and that's what I'm saying, we would have to, you know, we may be looking at that some, because right now, I guess, we only allow, we don't allow six-foot-high fences to go up to the edge of the property line where it butts a canal, do we? Okay, so those are some things that, to be honest with you, just didn't think about.
Yeah, I mean, I think, that's, that's important, because there's nothing worse than looking across the canal at somebody's, because you have no control what.
Right.
Type of shed it is.
And no, on this right here, if they put it in a side setback, it would have, or a rear setback, it would have to be screened some, in some manner, the question though becomes, how far do we allow it to encroach into that, because what, is the setback off waterways twenty-five feet or something? Okay, and so that's the only thing that we may be looking to come forward with some possibilities of, of code sections, because now, I think you might have a couple of sheds that, you know, are possibly closer to the, the water's edge than that, not, not that matters, but, you know, if, if you maintain that twenty-five feet, then, a lot of times, that's the whole backyard, so there's not going to be a shed there, so.
Well, sheds are sheds, do we have any, any, any research or any indication of what other similar communities allow with regard to sheds, or sheds, for example, are sheds even permitted in the Gulf Stream?
I'm not sure, we looked at a lot of different code sections, and that's where we kind of came up with, you know, this language here, we didn't kind of just invent it, so, we pulled this from various different municipalities that regulate sheds, and it seemed for the most part, if a shed did not exceed certain size limitations and was not, for lack of a better term, a permanent type of structure, then there were some allowances to say, no, you can encroach into the setbacks, provided that it's, it's kind of screened from your neighbor, so that's, that's where we were kind of going with, you know, with this language here.
So, do we want to look at the very basic question of, do we even want to allow sheds at all?
And I guess that's a question too, I can say. I can say, you know, you do have currently existing, you know, you kind of have sheds in your community that will encroach into setback areas, so.
Any, any feeling on part of the commissioners?
I like shed, I, I have a small shed myself, and it, it doesn't interfere with my neighbors. It's pretty well shielded from the street, you can't see it from the canal, and it gives me a place where I can put my lawn equipment. And maybe Gulfstream doesn't have it, but we're Ocean Ridge.
Sure, I understand, I'm not, I'm not.
I think I'm speaking for a lot of neighbors that I have, we all generally like our sheds. And they're not very big, so.
Any, any other commission comments regarding sheds in general?
I was wondering if there ought to be some sort of uniformity with design and color with the main residence. Suppose I decide to paint my shed to look like a zebra to please my children. Would that be, would that be permitted under this ordinance?
Yes, under the proposed one, because we are not regulating color, nothing like that. It's just you can't have electrical, you can't have plumbing, and if it meets the size requirements, then it could encroach into setbacks, so.
Well, boy, I think that, that's a real.
That's a good point.
That's a real important issue we need to consider.
What about dilapidation?
Well, that's a good point.
What about overall maintenance and dilapidation? You know, there, there should be something.
I, I hear what you're saying, the only problem is, if they don't get a permit from us to begin with, then it, I don't, I mean, we can certainly, that'll be kind of a conversation with Wayne and the chief there as far as like code enforcement, how we would try to address, okay, if it's rusty, how much rust is, you know, do you fall under that category? No, now you got to replace it.
It becomes an issue with storms. If it's a dilapidated shed, that's your missile that goes through someone's window, if it blows off in pieces.
Any, any quick audience comments regarding sheds? Don, ladies first. Page before beauty. Page before beauty, he says.
You got that right.
I'm looking at this information that Neil had put together. Have we looked at this? This is, this goes back to March.
Yeah, I think staff looked at it.
Staff has looked at it, but PMZ hasn't seen it.
Right.
Okay, well, I think that recovery is pretty good, that PMZ can see that. And then, what I did is I took Neil's recommendations, and then went through like loads and looked at what some of the qualifications were for size. Like this one's less than 25 square foot, that's kind of what that would look like. So, I've got this information, I'll give it to staff, but I think it's, I think, you know, as usual, Neil's done quite a bit of work, especially on, on setting up.
Good, let me, let me just turn this over to staff and then distribute it.
I'll give them pictures also, so that they can look at that for the next media. But what I did is I went through and looked at, you know, what types of sheds, what's manufactured sheds that you would buy and have installed on the property.
So, Don, in general, do you have a sense of, of sheds or no sheds, period?
Having one on my next-door neighbor's lot that's back up against the fence towards the front, with the case of my front yard. When the hedge is blew down, I painted the back of his shed green, so that I didn't see it. I didn't see the top of it, so I painted this much, but now we've grown the hedge up. I don't mind it, I don't have any judgment of it, because you really can't see the hedge from my front yard. You can see part of it as you drive past.
But you have to paint it.
But I think they're kind of a necessity.
It goes through the aesthetic factor.
I think there's somewhat of a necessity for some properties to change on the size. I mean, there's another one that I'm aware of, that I've gotten a number of complaints from neighbors and whatnot, that's across the canal, and you can see it from across the canal, it's certainly more than 25 feet off the canal, but the door's fallen off of it, and it's, it looks terrible. So, what do you do with, what do you do with that?
Sure. Cindy? And I, and I think the comment about zebra sheds, holy cow.
Darn, there goes that idea.
Or purple, or Cindy Martal, 26 South Harbor Drive, I'm really opposed to them. I just think, you know, I understand there's great neighbors, there's also really bad neighbors. There's neighbors that will do it to spite you, and paint it orange, and I've been through that. And, you know, I just think, I mean, David, I love you, I think, you know, you should have your shed, but you're a great neighbor. I'm dealing with a neighbor that will just put this massive shed where I live on that side of the house, and it's an eyesore, I hear it, it's a noise, drainage problems. I mean, visually, you're going to see it, it's very good, no matter how much you can, I mean, I have a hedge that was shaded on one side, but you'll see it from the road. So I'm against it, if there's a hurricane that comes, who knows if that will come over on my side? I just had a palm trees fall, not because of the hurricane, it fell like a month ago, and it destroyed my backyard. So I'm just saying, I think it's a bad idea. I think we have million-dollar homes, and you're putting a shed outside, it looks just out of place. So I'm against it, I mean, you know, I just think visually, you can't really hide it on the water. I mean, the six-foot, there's no fence in the back, you know, it's four feet from the water. And then you see it from another neighbor across the canal, so it is an eyesore, and, you know.
Lot of, lot of really important issues to consider, I think. And I don't, I don't think it's something we, we should rush into. Wayne, is this a, are you up to the, a challenge of, you know, do we want them at all, number one? And number two, if we do, hurricane standards, aesthetic standards, size standards, drainage issues, I don't know. So, anyway. Mark, you have?
I'm not a shed person, so I don't care. They live in a shed one day.
We could all be there.
Okay, let's.
With a bar.
So let's. Now, how shall we do this?
Do you say no alcohol?
Should we put off this item pending more staff research? Or is there a more productive way of dealing with this issue? To take into consideration all of the factors that we've heard over the last five, 10 minutes?
Can I just ask one clarification? Person wants to put a shed under this ordinance, they have to come in for an approval, correct?
Depending upon the size, you, you got you.
I, I, I think that's what you need to do, is every shed has to come in for.
The problem, the problem is that they're throwaway sheds, rubber.
It doesn't matter, I mean, temporary, they're all temporary structures, so that's, whether it's a throwaway or a ten-year.
The, the problem, the problem is on a temporary structure that's permitted, and it doesn't meet the wind loads, then you can't have it.
There we go.
That's a big one, I think, I mean.
No, I, I think to the point of the aggravation some neighbors have, if somebody just plonks a shed, and they don't have any kind of review by, by the building department, and I think we're open game, fair game.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I know in my conversations with Wayne, you know, if somebody comes in with one of those Rubbermaid sheds, like I've, I've seen them before, where it's, especially for bicycles, where it might be four feet high, five feet high, about six feet long, and you just put your bicycle in there, and that just sits on top of the grass. Is that something that you're saying that we, you know, if you're saying then, okay, we don't want to allow that, if anybody wants to do that, we would require a permit? And then the question becomes, well, then how far down do you go before it's just, well, here's a little box? Does that need a permit? That's, that's the problem that we're having in trying to.
Definition should be clarified, I mean, an enclosed element or structure is a shed. It's roofed and has sides and a door, that's a shed. As far as I'm concerned, David, you're, you're the shed man.
Well, no, I, I, I understand Cindy's argument, I understand all these arguments, but we've had sheds in this town since before I lived here, and it was kind of done with a wink and a nod, and everybody was happy with it. And I haven't really seen any in bad shape, but I, I'm sure there may be, so.
Again, I, I agree, nobody, I don't think we want to deny sheds at this stage, it's just that we want to be able.
Appreciate your sentiment.
I want to be able to say, here, you have to get a permit or some approval.
Approval, not permit.
And then, then the town has the right to then come in and say, through code enforcement, whatever, you're violating, so you don't aggravate the network.
Right, I mean, right now on the temporary sheds, the way it's proposed in the ordinance, it's not so much a permit, it's an administrative approval to kind of say, okay, does it meet these requirements in order to be able to encroach into the setback? Does it, as far as height, size, all of those things?
But it needs an inspection.
And I think you were going to look.
Inspection for that, yes, because it's, that way it's placed in the correct location.
Can't just be on paper.
Yeah.
There was a nuance to that in what you just said, Brian, and that was if it encroaches into.
The setback.
The setback. What about the one that's in the middle of the backyard that doesn't encroach any setback and is in disrepair? So, we go back to what Mark said, every shed, regardless of where it is, should go through the administrative approval process.
Well, and I guess that kind of comes back to, if somebody wants to put a Rubbermaid shed in the middle of their backyard, would you deem that as an accessory structure? Nate put you on the spot right now, but I mean, is that, is that an accessory structure? That it's kind of like, okay, you've got to get a permit?
It would meet the definition of accessory structure, because it's an enclosed object.
So it would require an administrative approval regardless of where it was on the property?
That's correct.
And I say this with some reservation, but look, everybody has to go through the architectural approval process. And, and again, I don't want to get too off on tangents, but a shed is a building, and, and shouldn't it go through not, not just administrative, a straight-up approval, but architectural approval? I mean, if, if you take this and extend it all the way down the line, I, I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just putting that on the table as something to consider.
I think if we give, sorry, if we give staff enough guidelines to which to review them, if they have a concern, then they can bring it to us as a, you know.
There was one thing here, it said 144 square feet in size, eight feet tall. That's a pretty big accessory building.
We're, we're taking that up, anything, a shed is a shed. I, I think we'd.
I, I realize it, but that's, that's one big shed.
Yeah.
That's, that's almost a livable.
What, what's the size in there again?
144, 12 by 12.
It's bigger than my kid's bedroom. It's bigger than my kid's bedroom.
So, but maybe, maybe, maybe we can do another tour de lows and start looking at, people can look at the square footage.
Let's just simplify it, any shed, whatever size.
Cindy, just, just for protocol, if you would.
Just have it, a shed is requiring administrative approval.
I agree with you, Mark.
I would love to look at synthetic grass, I mean, to be honest, I mean, I, I would rather look at that than a shed that's on the side and the setback. I don't want to see, you know, a, a building so close to another home. I mean, we have building codes here, you can't even build so close to your neighbor. So, I mean, that's my opinion, you can't cover it up, so.
Thank you.
I would add that if you live in a ranch like I do, next to a two-story home, my neighbor has a panoramic view of my backyard 24 hours a day. How could I disguise a shed in my backyard? My neighbor's looking out his bedroom window down into my yard. So if we have the idea of an opaque hedge or something, there's no, no hedge I could plant that would be 20 feet tall, or 24 feet tall.
That's a horrible thing called aerial rights, and you can't, you can't get into that.
Okay, so.
One more public comment.
Oh, yes. I, I think what you need to do is you need to think about what qualifies as a shed, you know, because I understand this, well, all sheds need to. I'll, I'll give you two examples from my background. My wife decided that she wants to have her patio cleaning equipment outside, so we bought it. And that's the question, is this a shed or not? It has two little legs, uh, four little legs, and it's basically a cabin, it's a wooden cabin that sits against the wall. It's him, and it's not going to bother anyone, nobody's ever going to complain about that thing besides me. Is that considered a shed? It's maybe two square feet, but is that a shed? There's also these Rubbermaid ones that you put against the wall, where you keep your shovels and your, and your, like little pan tools. Is that considered a shed? So come up with an idea when, when it becomes a shed, that cannot be higher than, say, six feet, it cannot have more than four square feet, or anything that is over four square feet, automatically.
I, I understand, I'm just trying.
The question is to the deck boxes, do I have a deck box, Amaya?
Yeah, I, I, I understand, I just, I'm trying to simplify it and cover everybody. So, I mean, if it's enclosed, you know, a deck box is not a, that's a furniture.
A piece of furniture is not.
Yeah. But anything that's enclosed, has a roof, sides, and any kind of operable access can be defined as a shed. You know, I have to walk in, you know, I mean, you can crawl in or whatever, dog's, we're going into dog holes next, I can see this. It's pretty, huh?
Could you, could you walk inside it?
No.
Okay, it's not a shed. Could I walk in it? Let's move on.
Let's, let's turn them over to staff. Because, you know, we got through the artificial turf thing, then we can get through this also. Anyway, Jerry? Can you motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
On the favor of a journey?
Aye.